I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Tyler Independent School District Board of Trustees. This meeting was previously called to order. We have been in executive session. We are now returning into our open meeting portion. And the first item we have is the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Aaron Martinez is going to lead us in that. If you can please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here today and represent our community. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. We come to you today asking for wisdom and support. Please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and community. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. Lord, I ask that you help us to be models for our children and students. May they see us as loving and forgiving, peaceful and just, compassionate and generous, and full of hope. May this meeting unite us in our vision, strengthen our purpose, and be inspired by the hopes we have for the future of our schools. For from him and through him and to him are all things; to him be the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
We have one action item from executive session on personnel. And this time, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we hire Mrs...oh, where's her name?
Brooke Parker.
Brooke Parker.
We're kind of working on the seat of our pants tonight. No, nothing about Brooke at all. This is on our end.
Brooke Parker as Director of Instructional Alternative Programs for Wayne...I mean, for the...yes, Wayne Beauchere School.
Okay.
Did I get all that the way it needs to be? Okay.
All right. I heard a second down here. All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Ms. Parker.
Ms. Parker, are you here with us? Come up here to the podium and say something cool about Beauchere's.
Well, I cheated a little bit and brought my notes because I'm so honored to...and thank you to the school board and to Dr. Crawford and to the selection committee. Just, I am so honored and humbled to accept the position as the Director of the Beauchere Center. It's even more of a special night because I'm being honored with one of our students who is going to be honored later in the meeting, so that made it even more special tonight. I'm so privileged to be following in the steps of great leaders that we've had at Beauchere's. Denise Johnson, Karen Hacker, Mr. Beauchere's who is here tonight have laid such a strong foundation for the Beauchere Center, and I am honored to carry on with the vision and mission of the Beauchere Center. I work with a great group of people who work so hard every single day to provide an exceptional level of care and education for our students, and to that, thank you very much. Again, I'm honored and look forward to the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you. Next, we have four different minutes to approve. If we can get a motion on that.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
All right. So that's approval of February 9th, two different minutes, the 13th of February and the 20th of February. Any discussion or changes? All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. That carries. Now we have a special recognition.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Crawford. We would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our Two District Students of the Month for March. We would like to recognize Nicholas Goodwin, a 4th grade student at Wayne D. Beauchere School, as our Elementary Student of the Month, and our Secondary Student of the Month is Haley Russell, a 12th grader at Robert E. Lee High School. Congratulations to both of these students, and we will now watch a brief video.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our Two District Students of the Month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Nicholas Goodwin, a 4th grade student at the Wayne D. Beauchere Center for Exceptional Programs, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Nicholas does not allow his limited mobility to slow him down. His teacher, Ms. Danielle Mulder, says he has a great desire to work hard and accomplish even the smallest tasks.
Just whenever he's doing his art, he looks at it, "Aww." And he just shows it to us, and he's like, he wants us to look at it. He wants us to smile, and he likes getting his good jobs, and that's great, and thumbs up.
Nicholas loves to help and will empty trash and greet visitors. Ms. Mulder describes how they're working on skills for his future.
What I've been working on with him is sorting those recyclables so that one day maybe he could work at the recycling plant. That he can sort bottles and cans and the papers, but he really likes to do that kind of stuff. So we talked to him about that, and we're like, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this so that one day he can do these things. And he's just, he gets so tickled, and one day, our custodian, he helped him take the trash around the halls and collecting it, and he just was, he was just, had the best time doing that. He was so happy.
Nicholas has overcome tremendous obstacles in his young life, and his smile is a shining example of how much he loves life in spite of the challenges he faces.
He's such a sweet boy. He just, just whenever Denise told me about this, I was just, I was really proud of him. And then I was, I was telling her all of his things that he can do and what he, what motivates him, and it just made me tear up thinking about it because he's such a sweet boy, and he's come so far. And he just, I really don't want him to leave my classroom. I know eventually he's gonna go up, but, you know, I don't want him to. I want to keep him in here for the rest of his time.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Haley Russell, a 12th grade student at Robert E. Lee High School. She is the president and actively involved in the French Club and enjoys the French way of life.
I've just always thought that the French culture was really nice. They're simple, I guess, in a way. It's just also peaceful.
The French Club cosponsors a small coffee shop set up in the Robert E. Lee Library. Haley can be found assisting with coffee sales, collecting money, taking orders, and brewing coffee and hot chocolate. She even came up with the cafe's name, Déjà Brew. She understands what it takes to be a good student.
To be a good student here, you just have to really try.
Haley wants to study wildlife biology. She plans to attend Tarleton State University and then Texas A&amp;M University. In preparation for these goals, Haley attends veterinary classes at the Tyler ISD Career and Technology Center. She plans to take the exam to earn her Veterinary Assistant Certification. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISDTV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
Nicholas, if you would please come forward. School. Harris, a junior, Austin Haynes, and Chloe Russell, all 9th graders at Robert E. Lee High School, for their quick actions in assisting fellow student Bailey Joyner, a 9th grader, during an asthma attack on the school bus. Ms. Turner pulled the bus aside and contacted Transportation Department, who in turn contacted EMS. Aleah, Austin, and Chloe attended to Bailey until the paramedics arrived. As a result of their swift action taken, Bailey was able to return to class the very next day. Today, we would like to honor Ms. Turner, Aleah, Austin, and Chloe, and would like to ask them to please come forward. Thank you, students and Ms. Turner, for your heroic efforts, and also Bailey is with us today, and we would like for her to please stand, and we're so glad that she's doing well and has recovered. Congratulations to John Tyler High School Speech and Debate students Takorian Tilly and Tristan Ferguson for qualifying for the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament to be held in Montgomery, Alabama in June. Takorian will compete in foreign extemporaneous speaking and Tristan in congressional debate. Also, classmate Jose Romero earned an alternative spot in congressional debate. Congratulations to these three students. award goes to Alejandra Carmona from Austin Elementary School, and we would like to ask her to please come forward and be recognized at this time.
Okay. We will pick up here with Continuous Improvement Student Outcomes Section of our agenda, and tonight, we're going to look at Goal 2.2, which is College Readiness. And I believe we have, looks like, Mr. Gary Brown coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Crawford, and Trustees, for allowing me the opportunity to share some information in the area of college readiness and where we currently sit and where we're headed, hopefully. It's always great to follow some great student recognitions like that. It's a great spot to be, even though we're kind of vacated a little bit. The last board meeting, I shared some information on current technology education in the area of industry-recognized certifications, and I'm very pleased to report that the numbers that I gave you last time, that we've doubled just in the last month. I told you this was the time of year students would be taking these assessments, and one of our students working towards the Veterinary Assistant Certification, and there's a lot of good things happening in that area. Specifically, though, tonight, what I want to talk about in Domain 4 is going to lean towards our Advanced Placement Program in the exams that students take, and then the Dual Enrollment Program that students take for the dual credit of high school and college. Just a reminder, in the Accountability System, those of us in education are very familiar with this, but not everyone is, and so just kind of a reminder, but the five domains in which the campuses and districts will be rated moving forward in 2017, 2018, Domain 1 and 2, and there's a lot of discussion, as you're well aware, at the state level is exactly what this will look like from the commissioner and from the legislators moving forward. But the one area, and I stress this with our administrative team and our teachers, is that in Domain 4, we're looking at this year's graduates, and that's a key piece. Next year's student performance in the other areas will be in the following year, but we're looking at this year's graduates that are graduating two months to get Domain 4 indicators. That's assuming we move forward, and that's the plan right now. If you look at Domain 4 specifically, it's 35% of the overall rating in the Accountability System, so it's a very healthy chunk of that, and it really is broken down into three components that we're looking at as far as measurement. The first one, which is 10 of the 35 points, almost 30% of this domain, is do students receive a high school diploma or not? Do they earn that diploma, and do they earn that on time? And then in addition to that, additional points are awarded, 14%, as you can see, five of the 35 points for do they receive an endorsement along with graduating with that high school diploma? And then finally, and the one that I'm going to focus on mostly tonight, is the final one, post-secondary readiness, which is 20 of the 35 points in Domain 4, and it speaks specifically to do the students meet one or more of the criteria that the state has outlined to determine whether or not a student is post-secondary ready. In the six criteria that a student can achieve, any one of these six, it's not a combination that are listed in Domain 4, and you've seen these before, just the CTE coherent sequence, the nationally-recognized certifications, the CTE program, the benchmark test scores on the Texas Success Initiative ACT or SAT, the dual credit hours that students complete, not just take, and then ultimately, the AP exam scores that students receive, and then finally, there's the enlistment in the United States Armed Forces. Some of these actually pair themselves together when you really drill down and look at those. For instance, the first two, where it says, "Complete a CTE coherent sequence of courses," that is pretty much a prerequisite to be able to accomplish number two. I'm not really sure of any pathway that you would go to work towards a nationally-recognized certification if you weren't involved in a CTE coherent sequence. So those two very much pair together. Once you, when you earn one, it really blends with the other. The same thing is true of these next two. They really do go together because in order for our students to be duly enrolled at Tyler Junior College and Tyler ISD High School, then they have to meet a certain criteria, either on the Texas Success Initiative score, the ACT score, or the SAT score, meaning that in order to take a dual-credit class, for the most part, you've met criteria number three. So those two pair together as well. Five is a standalone, beside, it's completely separate, and that speaks to not taking AP class, just taking the classes, but taking the associated exams and then scoring three, four, or five on the correlated exam. And then, of course, finally, the last one with the listing in the Armed Forces. The two that I'm going to specifically talk about, touch on, are number four and five, the dual enrollment and AP exams. To start off with and trying to compare apples to apples, when you go back in time, 18 months, and look at the fall of 2015, our dual-credit or dual-enrollment program, Tyler ISD students were enrolled in 451 separate dual-credit courses during this time, and of that group of students, 451 courses, 414 of the students received credit. So we had a passing rate of just right under 92% in those courses. So 414, you multiply that by three, and 1,200, and whatever, we got 42 credit hours that were attained in the fall. So if you fast-forward a year to this previous fall, six months ago, actually wrapped up three months ago, as far as into the semester, we had 681 students enrolled in dual-credit courses, and of those, we had 597 courses that were actually passed. The passing rate dipped just a little bit, and there are a couple of reasons. We looked into that, is why it dipped just a little, but overall, you can see that there's a pretty significant increase in the number of dual-credit classes where students actually earn credit, as far as where we are. As soon as this semester ends, we'll be able to compare the spring of 2016 to this current spring semester and see where we fall there as far as passing rates, the number of credits that are earned. In terms of the AP exams, which is another measure, completely separate measure for post-secondary readiness, when you go back to last May, which we're fast approaching the next AP exam season, you can see that 490 students, high school students in Tyler, took 882 AP exams in May of 2016, and of those exams that were taken, 218 exams were scored a three, four, or five, which generally is considered to be the passing standard that would be accepted by colleges and universities, which was a 44.5. And I know this is one of the board goals. It's also one of the goals in the College and Career Department, that we look very sharply at that passing percentage. We want to see the number of students taking exams increase, but simultaneously, we want to see the passing rate increase in these exams as well. So if you project ahead, here we are at the end of March. These exams are just a little over six weeks away. We finished up our registration for the May exams, and we have 541 students that have registered, so that number's up. More students have registered to take exams, as well as 938 exams, so that number's gone up as well, as far as the actual number of students. So about 51 more students taking about 56 more exams than did last year. So if you move that forward and associate it with the goal that we've set for the 2% increase, we're projecting, assuming all those students show up on the day of the test and take the test, that at 46.5% passing rate, that we'll actually have 541 students passing it with a three, four, or five on their AP exams this time around. So that's, we should get the results back, and hopefully, we'll get them a little bit early. They say July, sometimes you get them at the end of June, it depends. But we'll be able to come back to you with that information as to how we actually perform based on the goals that we set. Just some additional information, talking about the AP program, I think it's very important. It's something that we put in front of our teachers, our students, and share this information with our parents. But there are recognitions within the AP program that are significant that students can achieve. AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, AP Scholar with Distinction, all the way up to National AP Scholar. And you can see the criteria there. Just to earn that first one, a student has to take and pass a minimum of three of these AP exams during their high school career, and then it just continually escalates. It goes to an average of 3.25 on all exams with at least four or more passed, an AP Scholar with Distinction. That average moves up to 3.5 on all AP exams passed, and you must pass five, a minimum of five. And then this final one, which is, that's one of the most prestigious things a high school student can do, honestly, and there are a lot of different measures that we go through, but when you look at that criteria for National AP Scholar, all of the AP exams that a student would take while they were in high school, the average has to be at least a 4.0. That's an average test. I mean, if you make even a three, you've got to get a five to balance that out, and they have to score four or higher on eight AP exams. That's significant, and when you just think about the credit and just the level. These are the numbers from last May's administration. We, in the district, we had 40 AP Scholars in Tyler ISD, then AP Scholars with Honor, we had eight, AP Scholars with Distinction, 14, and then we actually had three students attain a very, very highest level who are currently attending BYU, Ross, and SMU. Just tremendous results. So that's, that's a testament to these students, to their teachers, to their programs, and certainly to their parents, just for tremendous work in this area. This is just a brief timeline, mostly for your information, but we have ordered the exams, the 541 students that we talked about, the 900-plus exams. Tutorials start next Monday, so we have after-school tutorials for these AP students to attend to get additional work in specific areas to prepare for their tests. The exam administrations occur over a two-week period in May, and then we do hope to receive, like I said, maybe the end of June, but probably closer to the beginning or middle of July, and then we'll be able to get that information on this year's AP Scholars and bring that back to you, hopefully, at the beginning of next school year. Just some new things on the horizon, I thought I'd put this in here since we're sharing information for 2017, 2018. Students have actually already registered for their courses, and we're offering a new AP European History course at Robert E. Lee High School. That's an additional course that had not been offered before. We're bringing online AP World History, and have quite a few students at John Tyler High School that have registered for this course. AP Music Theory is a new offering for students this year. That's a very high-level music course, and as a last checking, I think the numbers at Robert E. Lee definitely say that this course will make. We're still working on John Tyler. We need a certain number of students to actually take the course for it to be able to be offered, but that will be new on both campuses. And in the area of dual enrollment, we're adding some dual-credit math classes, this specifically at Robert E. Lee, to our college algebra, and that's college statistics and college precalculus, with a plan, hopefully, to continue adding dual-credit and AP classes as we move forward. And then looking ahead one more year, and this really, this is 18 months out, but it's something that the planning has already begun, to look at this, as the IB program is phasing out, this year's juniors that will graduate next year will be the last group of students in the IB program, and so we want something to fill the void, and this is a very robust, very high-end academic program that College Board offers, AP Capstone. There are 104 high schools in Texas. This will be the very first year they'll have students that will graduate with this program. It's a very, it's a brand-new program. It's been around for a couple of years in preparation, but we've actually sent in the initial information, are looking at bringing that onboard, and it would not be for next year, not for 2017, 2018, but then the following year. We would offer the opportunity for students to take an AP seminar class, either their sophomore year or their junior year, followed up by an AP research class, where they actually have to not only develop an actual research plan, but they have to do the research itself. It's pretty amazing what these high school students can do, which ultimately... It's pretty amazing what these high school students can do, which ultimately could lead to an AP Capstone diploma. That's down the road a little bit, just wanted to kind of put that out in front of you, something that we're looking at. And that's most, there's all kinds of information we could share, but basically, to cover the areas that we talked about, are there any questions?
We'll say so.
About AP or dual-credit?
Any?
Anything?
Dr. Crawford? Did we discuss, I don't know, we might have been having a sidebar conversation here, did we talk about AP Biology this year? Did you mention that?
Well, we are looking at AP Biology. Right now, we do not have a science offering. We're looking at both dual-credit science and AP science. It wasn't in the course selections that were put out to students in the fall, but it is something that we're looking at to bring online.
AP Human Geography.
We already have that.
Freshman year this year, right?
We have that.
Okay, I didn't know if the board might have, did you mention that earlier?
I didn't go through the sequence of the courses, but we do have AP courses in place now for students, freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, and senior year, to take at the AP level. And if not, that and the core area is certainly the pre-AP offerings.
I appreciate Mr. Brown, and then the vigor that he's attacked this, and he's already made a difference in his role. We redesigned one of those central office positions just to focus on domain four, obviously, but certainly, you know, making our experience in Tyler ISD, we're the largest school district in East Texas, we have a lot of suburban and mid-urban flavor here, and we need to act like it with our advanced placement and our dual-credit. And so I'm excited about the future of what we can do here in Tyler ISD with, under Mr. Brown's leadership.
Appreciate that.
See if the board has any questions before we move on.
Mr. Brown, these numbers look good in terms of the trends improving, higher passing, I mean, higher participation rates. I'm asking this as a board member and then also as a parent who's, I've got three kids in high school, and they're wrestling with AP versus concurrent. And if you look at the pass rate here, we've got less than half our kids scoring a three or higher on AP, which means they won't get college credit for the most part. And then you have an eighty-seven percent pass rate on the concurrent classes, which my understanding is, if they stay in-state, they're very likely to have those credits accepted. So can you talk through how students are advised whether they should take AP or concurrent, and then how that impacts our goals here? Because I think we're, are we biased towards AP participation, or are those two lumped together? I guess that's a second question, if you could.
And depending on who you speak with and who would answer that question, you would probably get a different response.
I would agree with that.
There is not, I would hope there is not a bias toward one program over another, just because of the fact that they're very unique and they serve specific needs for individual students, and that's the key. And so from our counseling perspective, and our teachers and our administrators that are working with parents and students, we want to make sure that they're being able to explain the benefits of both programs, and oftentimes, and I can speak in personal experience, having a daughter that went to school, a hybrid of advanced placement and dual-credit is often a great model. Some students know, their parents know, and they know that they're looking at a tier-one university, possibly even out-of-state, as you saw, some of the ones that we have, that have gone out-of-state, they're leaning more towards the AP track, because they know that's portable credit when they score those three, fours, and fives. The dual-credit, the TJC Core is accepted, that's law. When you go to a state school in the state of Texas, they have to accept that forty-two-hour Core. So as our students are passing these dual enrollment, they're guaranteed, when they take them with them to Texas State, or Texas A&amp;M, or Texas, all the state schools, student of Austin, that those are going to count. They're going to go right on their transcript, and those will count toward their four-year degree plan, or their college degree plan. So I would hope that we don't have anyone that's trying to counsel a parent or student one over the other, but just to explain the benefits of each, and let the parent and student make the very best decision. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but there's not a, the passing rate is definitely higher in dual-credit, if you're just talking about just to sit in. But one thing about AP exams that not everyone realizes is that there's not a prerequisite to take an AP exam. So we have many students that will take the dual-credit class for the guaranteed, get the ARB, get the credit on the TJC transcript, that will go ahead and take that AP exam shooting for the three, four, or five, knowing that that credit then is portable and transferable to other universities. I think education and communication is really the key.
And then, are our goals, are we, do we treat concurrent and AP equally in terms of the goals that we've set, or we, do we focus on AP?
We're trying to increase our advanced placement performance. We've got a pretty good trajectory on dual-credit already, and so, you know, what we've, you know, I don't want to give us a batting practice fastball on a dual-credit, I think that that's going to be something that we may have to come back and look at again, if they change some of the statute that's available out there in this session. They've talked about transforming how dual-credit can be awarded and how it counts. So right now, as far as our goals go, it is heavy on improving our scores, advanced placement. I will make a statement, though, that colleges, upon, you know, if you're worried about take that portability of the credit, that's great, but they're also going to look at your transcript. Did you take the path of most resistance as opposed to the path of least resistance? And those dual-credit courses, whether you're trying to get into a Baylor or an SMU, they'll like that as well. In fact, I think some of our students have actually taken dual-credit here locally, received the credit, but whenever they went into their major, major tier-one research university like A&amp;M, get into the engineering program, they retake a course that they've already taken here. Those colleges prefer that. I've even had college advisors tell us that if you took, I don't know, dual-credit statistics, and you decide to go to Baylor, what they'll do is they'll sub out something else in your degree plan, so that you're not wasting those hours. I think that's something that I think a lot of parents, as far as dual-credit goes, really do want to see happen, to make sure that their money is stretched that way. And in my household, that's, we're big believers in the dual-credit, because it's meant a lot to us financially, being able to go that route. So I think it is a, it's an acquired taste, your children might be different than mine, different than yours, and different than yours, different than yours. And so I think we're trying to do the best we can to communicate and have a diversity in there to be able to meet those needs. But I like what Mr. Brown said, the hybrid model is very effective, especially if you've got a child that's just naturally gifted in mathematics, they might could walk into an AP exam and take that course without having to take the AP class.
That's a good example. I will say Reverend Hager and I have not spoken on this, but both having kids in high school, it sounds like we've gone through the same process and maneuver, and we're pretty, it's not something that all the parents understand. So, you know, if there's a way to educate parents on what, you know, we're both on the board, and we're having to call and have people sit down and talk to us about, what do we, you know, what is the AP, what is the dual-credit, what is the concurrent, why, might be something we put out there maybe a little more to the public and to educate the parents on.
Absolutely.
Noted.
The other thing I'd say there is, if the AP courses are more rigorous, if it is higher stakes and that half the kids aren't passing, but if they count the same towards class rank, if you wanted to have more people take that risk to take the AP courses, that would be something that maybe we should look at in the future, to offer an additional incentive out there to take the risk of the more difficult class.
That's something to consider as well. I can tell you that the passing rates on the AP exams, that we, we're definitely working on that, with some professional development and some targeted things with our instructors, those numbers need to go up.
And I'll add on the GPA thing. You're exactly right in regard to that, that there's got to be a little bit of incentive out there, however, it can't just be on taking the course. It doesn't do us any good if we say, young man, go take the AP test, or course, there has to be a carrot there about scoring a three, four, or five to get that award, in my opinion. And it might be weighted, maybe you take the course and you don't make the three, four, or five, but you get some type of credit, maybe it knocks it down to a dual-credit level of point award, but I think we've gotten into some trouble before in districts we've all served in, to where we did weight those AP courses significantly higher than other ones, and then there was no return as far as taking the actual AP test. In fact, some of them have not even taken the AP test, which just puzzles me. Yeah. So we've got to figure out that balance, and there might be some policy work that's done here in regard to the grading handbook and the GPA awarding of that, if y'all want to tackle that. Sounds like you do.
A few questions, Mr. Brown. I'm a little hoarse tonight, so it may go up and down. I don't see numbers per high school, and if at all possible, as soon as you can, I would like to see the numbers, students taking the AP courses and the dual-credit courses at each high school. That's a statement. The question being, are students provided tutorials before the month of March? I'm trying to understand, why do we wait until March? Are we preparing the students for the rigor?
Well, that's a good question, I certainly can get you the information, any information you need on specific student groups or our high schools. The tutorials, this is a little bit different animal when you think of the traditional tutorial model, that's more of a remediation or a catch-up and acceleration. These are students that are already applying themselves, if they're staying on pace and scoring well. These are just the finishing touches that instructors are putting on to truly prepare students that are willing to put forth the extra time and effort. You'd be surprised, I mean, we do have quite a few students that'll take advantage of these, but then we also have some students, and Dr. Crawford mentioned it, they're not motivated and pushing themselves, they need to, and we have to work on that. That's something, we need more students challenging themselves at higher levels. So for example, we've got probably thirty-five or forty tutorial sessions, and they start next week, we'll see what the percentages of attendance are, but they're at four-thirty in the evening, and they're Saturday morning at nine o'clock, and they're totally up to the students as to whether or not they attend, so we really do need to work on that.
Why would a student take the course and not take the test? I don't understand that.
Well, Dr. Crawford mentioned that.
GPA would be one, give you a leg up on GPA. The other one does, is, is it does look good on your college transcript, as you're trying to apply to get into a college, because whenever you're applying to get into college, obviously, they want to see that you've been taking those courses, and then they look at your grades on that. Sometimes they don't, I mean, obviously, the portability of whether you score a three, four, or five is very important, but as far as you applying of when you do that, you haven't taken some of those AP exams yet, because you're waiting to take those, you're at the final semester of your senior year, and you've already been accepted into X, Y, or Z colleges.
That's true, too.
All right, and last question, do we start counseling students at middle school, early middle school, to parents as well, parents and students about dual-credit and AP?
I can't speak to previously, what may have occurred over the previous years, but this year, we've started that, we've had some individual information nights at the middle schools. I've had an opportunity to meet with each of the principals multiple times, counselors, to make sure they have this information, and this has really been the approach that I've taken. I would much prefer a parent that has a question with their eighth-grade student, when they ask that of the eighth-grade counselor, to get the answer from the eighth-grade counselor, because I think there's been a lot of, well, I'm not sure, but I'll, and I'm fine to talk to anybody, but the more information that the middle school counselors and teachers and administrators have about our advanced academics programs, the better prepared these middle school students will be in the present and moving into high school.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, looks like it. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate your work. All right, we move on to public participation. But, we did not have anyone sign up tonight, I'm getting a head shake, no. So we will move on past that to business, legal, finance, consent agenda. There are a few items there, I guess we'll pull B. Any others, board members or Dr. Crawford? If not, we'll get a motion for items A, C, and D.
Talking about E, too? Did you say we're pulling E?
Oh, E. I did not, but it's much needed.
Need to add E on there, A, C, D, and E.
Okay. Is that the motion?
I move, we approve items A through E with the exception of B.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Mr. Washman, that passes. Will we move on to our gifts and donations?
This is one of my favorite parts, our parts of the evening. Monthly, it seems like we've got these great philanthropic and community support organizations that provide enterprising dollars for our programs at our campuses, and tonight, I bring to you for the Tyler Lee Football Club, for the Robert E. Lee Football Program, donation the amount of eighteen thousand fifty-seven dollars for various supplies and equipment. And then we also have our friends from Cooperative Teachers Credit Union, the legendary Wayne DeBosehears is here tonight, Zeb Cantley, and Tim Miller, very proud that they're here tonight, thirty-five thousand five hundred for Cooperative Teachers Credit Union from them. They've got a BOC, a big old check, that they're going to take a picture with here in a minute, for various Tyler ISD programs. We certainly appreciate everything that they do for us, it's been a great partnership for three years since I've been here, and I hope that we continue that.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Let's see, are these listed separately? Yes, let's do them separately, since they're a pretty good-sized donation. So we first have the, accept the donation from the Tyler Lee Football Club. We can get a motion on that.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you to all our booster clubs for all the work you do, it's much needed, and we appreciate you guys. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Next, we have the Cooperative Teachers Credit Union donation, I'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
And I'll second.
All right, any discussion there?
We always appreciate the Cooperative Teachers Credit Union and all that you do for our students, and actually, you do a lot in the community, and we thank you for that.
Good to see you guys again. Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, at this time, we'll have a few board members or all board members go take a ceremonial picture with that big old check, if you don't mind.
All right, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Make sure we got that on the record. All right. All right, next we go to the curriculum instruction consent agenda, are there any items that need to be pulled there? I don't have anything, if not, we will take a motion on items A, B, C, and D.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I move that we approve Roman numeral twelve, A through D.
Thank you, Reverend Mason, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, knock that out. Go to superintendent staff reports.
We have the quarterly investment report and the quarterly financial executive report. Mrs. Bjork, do you have anything that you'd like to make notation of in your, in this quarterly report?
Board members, any questions on the quarterly investment report? No drama there? I guess that's what I heard from over there. Okay. And then the financial executive report.
Well, we'll move right along then. Discuss Tasby Update 107.
So you've got in your packet an update to policy, an update 107. Certainly, there's a legislative session that's going on right now, so I'm sure we're going to have a lot of fun after the summer, whenever they get everything figured out in Austin. But right now, we do have some updates that are coming down the pike, as Tasby normally provides you. There's anything from gifts and solicitations and donations to contracted services, probationary contracts, term contracts, compulsory attendance, student fundraising and relations with parent organizations. This is a first reading of this policy, so have fun reading that. If you've got any questions or concerns about some of the policy that has been handed down from Tasby, feel free to contact myself or one of the direct reports. Just for the board's notice and for the public's notice, the chief of staff in our new, in our reorganization will be the one whose house that policy resides inside of, so that'll be Mr. Jones, be your chief policy contact, starting today, or now. So Mr. Jones has that. We're short-staffed by one right now, but we're going to look to fill that position to kind of be a policy analyst and, or not an analyst, but a gatherer. We're the analysts. So in saying that, one of those policies, the first one talks about gifts and solicitations on the replacement of policy, just to give you a heads-up about sometimes how this, someone's writing these policies that don't get to attend board meetings or administrate the district of our size. One of those was that every donation comes in front of the school board for action, and currently, our policy limits are anything $5,000 and above. So if Mr. Hager wanted to donate $200 to a play, that would actually go into the board book every month, and we'd have to actually, well, that's the way the policy, their recommended policy is written. We're actually going to try to stick with what we've been doing. Okay, so we can talk about that, it's first reading, y'all talk about, y'all kind of chew on that one. But that's just an example for the public about kind of what we get. We have to go in there and tweak the, the recommended policies to a more locally-flavored policy that we're used to. So we think it'd probably slow down some of the efficiency on some of these donations that we do get.
This is first reading, if you have any thoughts or considering these, give the staff a call, and we'll bring this back to the board. Future meetings, April 6th and April 17th, and after that will be in May.
After that will be in May.
All right, that's all we've got tonight, folks. Appreciate everyone coming, sticking with us. This time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Who will adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.